Call to order, the regular board of trustees meeting for two July at 2013 at 7:02 PM. And, Lord, you have asked us to call to you with the promise that you will answer when we do. We humbly seek your guidance for our village, state, and countries elected. Give us wisdom so we'll be people guided by your spirit and filled with your presence. Also, Lord, if you would please, give comfort and solace to the families of the brave firefighters in Arizona that you called home this weekend past. May they rest in peace. Roll call, please.
Trustees head?
Here.
Line?
Here.
O'Brien, Birdland?
Here.
Brody?
Here.
Standifer?
Here.
President Lecken?
Here.
Trustees Zappa?
Here.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of 21 May 2013 and for June 2013.
I'll move to approve the minutes from May 21st and June 4th, 2013.
Please.
Second.
Thank you, George. Meeting for both those, or minutes from both those meetings are approved. Item number three, comments from the floor, opportunity for residents to make board aware of topics, issues, opportunities not on today's agenda.
Did we not?
Yeah. We should quote on that motion. She made the motion.
To approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Approve the minutes with no corrections.
But she made a motion. It's not like if there are no amendments or corrections, we can just let them stand.
Okay.
But since she made a motion, we almost have to.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes?
You accepted the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, back to number three. Anybody, let's see, I think all the players out here are on the agenda. So, there you go. Item number four is, as everybody is pretty much aware, we had a couple storms roll through here Friday last and a lot of water, a lot of damage, you know, possible damage to the storm sewer system from the water that came through. And so, in order to be able to apply for funds through the emergency, funds of the state, county, we needed to, I needed to declare a declaration. Declaration was, was made and had, with the authority that it would be approved by the board in a timely manner, and we didn't think it necessary for a special meeting. So, the motion is to move to affirm the proclamation of municipal emergency disaster that is in effect until Tuesday to July 2013 and continuance until the village president and staff determine is no longer needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All in favor of?
Any discussion on that?
Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor of the motion to undeclare, I guess, the disaster?
The one that's on the table.
The disaster on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, item number five.
Stan, can I move to approve the temporary Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license for North Hudson Pepper Festival, Inc., with an effective date of August 15th through August 19th, 2013, as recommended by the village clerk?
Second.
Mark, thank you, George. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six. Looks like the cozy corner.
Read this, every one of these?
Having a party.
If you can say as.
Or three.
Can I move to approve the amended Class B liquor license for extended premises, cozy corner for the A item, the Nelson family reunion Friday, July 12th, 2013, through Sunday, July 14th, 2013, with the conditions outlined from our chief of police?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ted, any discussion? All in favor of the Nelson family reunion from the 12th to the 14th? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, there's carries.
Stan, can I move to approve the fifth annual grand opening Saturday? This would be item B under the amended Class B, Class B liquor license for extended premises for Cozy Corner. The fifth annual grand opening Saturday, July 20th, 2013, with the conditions recommended by our chief of police.
Is there a second?
Melissa, for item B and C, there is time changes on there. Item B, it should be from 10 o'clock AM to 10 o'clock PM. And item C, when you get to that one, it should be from 4 o'clock PM to 10 o'clock PM.
We're just on item B right now. Are you okay with amending the motion?
The motion hasn't even been seconded yet.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Paul.
Originally 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, is now?
Melissa, would you say the hours again?
It should be from 10 o'clock AM to 10 o'clock PM.
Yeah, I ran with Tom on that.
Any further discussion?
Is there a second to that amendment?
Yep. Second to, Paul?
I already said.
Okay. So, any further discussion? All in favor of item B, 6B, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
On item C, is it the times right, 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM?
Should be 4 o'clock PM.
4:00 PM, okay. Stan, I'd like to move item C for the Cozy Corner amended liquor license. Item C, class reunion of 1998, Saturday, July 27th, 2013, and with the, if everybody changed the time from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM, again with the same conditions approved, recommended by the chief.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Shop Yards Project Special Assessment for Public Improvement Along the Access Road. Number, or letter A, apportionment of Shop Yards Improvement Special Assessment, stipulation slash waiver, agreement between the property owners, discussion, possible approval. We have, we have a motion for that? Discussion?
Public Works.
Mr. President, I was not at the last board meeting and the public hearing because I needed to conduct the county board meeting, but I'm assuming, I do not know this for sure, I'm assuming that there was a motion because it was postponed, referred back to Public Works and postponed until this meeting. So, I'm assuming that there is an actionable item in front of the body, and it was the recommendation from Public Works.
Looking for it right now.
I think that's correct.
Where is it in Public Works?
There was a motion to table, I think, at last.
Well, postponed until this date.
It's on page three. The large, the large paragraph on page three of the meeting minutes.
Okay, but what is, what's the action? What's the suggestion?
The motion was to close the public hearing, motion passed. Table the engineer's report and send it back to Public Works.
Yeah, what's your, I don't see.
So, I think that's where we're at. The board tabled it, send it back to Public Works. Public Works reviewed it.
Well, essentially, they referred it. I mean, a motion to table's a motion to kill, they didn't move to kill it. Don't want to get into semantics here. Anyway, I don't think a motion is necessary. I think there's a motion in front of the body.
I think that would be fine, yeah. I think you're fine with that, Darryl. So, if you want to just move ahead on the motion. Well, but there was no motion.
There is no motion.
Made at the last meeting to approve or deny or anything else. So, I mean, if that's where you want to go with this, I think we'll need.
No, I'm asking only as a point of clarification.
It was sent back to Public Works without a motion.
Okay, what was sent, what was sent back? The report of the engineer? Is that what was sent back?
No, the.
I think they took no action at all.
Engineer's report was tabled, and it was sent back to Public Works.
The controversy was.
If we're, if we're sort of talking just parliamentary procedure here, you know, maybe the word tabled was the wrong word.
Tabled is the wrong action.
What they did was they took no action on the, on the initial recommendation and sent it back to Public Works to review it again.
To review the recommendation that Public Works made.
Come back with a new recommendation. I believe that's where we're at.
Okay.
Is there is, there is a day?
Well, so I think just we need, if we want, I think we will need a new motion, and I think you're, you know, you have some things to say about this or to put a.
Well, we need to get something on the table, so we've got something to discuss.
Do we need a motion before we have a presentation from folks in the shopyard?
Well, from a strict interpretation of parliamentary procedure, the answer is yes, because we need something that is an actionable item to discuss and to debate.
But I would also say that village precedent has never been to follow that particular aspect of the strict parliamentary procedure, so.
And this isn't a public hearing at this point.
Right, a public hearing's been conducted.
Yes, correct.
It was left at the Public Works meeting that at this meeting, a representative, and Paul, I remember it very well, one representative would speak, and they were encouraged to bring their attorney. And the topic was the, we need to collect $64,000 plus, a little more than that, and they were to come up with a plan for who would pay how much because they didn't like ours.
I, I was under the impression that was going to be delivered to the hall so that it could be included in the board packet.
So was I.
By last week.
I've seen nothing. I've seen nothing.
Yeah, there was nothing included.
Stan, are you willing to entertain?
Well, how, how do you want to proceed? Do you want an actionable item for discussion, or do you want to open it up? How do you want to proceed?
Actionable item for discussion.
In that case, Mr. President, I move to, I move the original recommendation from Public Works, which is to assess the affected property owners, including the village, per the fee schedule outlined by the village engineer, which would be $7,146.67 per parcel.
Is there a second?
And now, now it's open for discussion?
Is there a second, Stan?
I said, is there a second?
Is there a second to Darryl's motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
May I speak to that, then?
Darryl?
As Yogi Berra once famously said, this feels like deja vu all over again. So, here we are discussing this item. I realize that this is an important item, but it has the potential to become precedent setting. And by that, I mean, we have an assessment policy in the village ordinance, and I think that would be unwise of us to deviate from that assessment policy. At our last Public Works meeting, we discussed at length the original recommendation, which I still think is in fact the proper one. There were some allegations that some thought it was unfair. It's been my observation over the years that when someone, when talking about money says unfair, that really is code for, I think someone else should pay more so I can pay less. In the analysis of this project, what is unique about it is that we are considering an infrastructure project for the benefit of the village, and that is to improve the water quality and the flow rate and the water pressure in that area, to improve the sanitary sewer and eliminate the freezing problem, and to enhance that area from an economic development standpoint, not only for the current contiguous and affected property owners, but potentially for other buildable entities that may want to locate in that village industrial area, which is really the only available industrial area that we have for the village. If in fact that is the case, and that is that for the benefit of the village, the clear public benefit of the village, we want to enhance that area from an economic development standpoint, then I think it would be unwise of us, and frankly irresponsible, for us to follow the suggestion that was made, that we complete the infrastructure project and do not hard surface the road, that we in fact leave the road in some kind of unfinished status. Because someone coming to that area and looking not only at your properties, but considering locating in that area or buying one of your properties, would find it quite disadvantaged to look at an uncompleted area and an uncompleted road. So, from that standpoint, looking at the fact, even though it's a private road, it's a private road in a clearly defined National Historic Register area of the village, the only economic area available for industrial development, and I think that it would be incumbent upon us and the greater public good to complete the project as best we can, and that includes a hard-surfaced road according to the plan that was outlined by the village engineer. I realize that there's disagreement to that, and I respect every other opinion, but the report that comes from Public Works is to affirm the original recommendation that we made to the village board, and, Mr. President, that is the reason for our motion.
Okay. Thank you, Darryl. Further discussion?
I was, I was under the impression that we had requested them to come back with an attorney and a single spokesman and a document signed by every one of the property owners as to an alternative for the financing of that paved surface.
If they do, that can, that can well be an amendment, but also, the instruction was to have that available for our review on Friday. There was nothing in the board packet, and therefore, I think it's incumbent upon us to have an actionable item in front of us, and it is, and at the end of the discussion, we're going to either adopt that motion or we're going to amend the motion.
Can we get to talk about it before you do this?
Mr. President, you, you are conducting the meeting.
I would allow one person to maybe, if you have somebody from your group, to explain why you didn't meet the, the request of the Public Works Committee, but as far as the having a chance to, we've had this discussion now, what, two, three months, you know, with the group, and so, you know, when somebody gonna, would like to tell us why we didn't receive anything for our packets so we could review it, that would be, I would allow that, but other than that, there's, Colin. Please.
Colin Thorpe, SeaWorld Properties, it's 400 Monroe Street North. The reason you don't have anything is because, as, I wasn't even planning on being at the Public Works meeting because I was supposed to be out of town, and I was until Sunday or that is Monday morning, when I came home to chaos with the storm. I had to clear branches away from my driveway to get my door at 1:00 in the morning. I have a property maintenance business, and so, I've been more, to say the least, more than a little bit busy. And, you know, it, it just plain old didn't happen. That's, that's why. And it was kind of, put it into my lap, and it, we, we just ran out of time, or gonna try and get something together Thursday, trying to get something together on Friday. I talked to Dan one day, I talked to Ben one day. I got a note from Nick. It, it just didn't happen. My 103-year-old grandmother died on Friday. My, my wife's uncle died on Friday. Ben's brother was in a horrible accident. He was gonna do something with it. We just, you know, the, the problem here is that you had, at the Public Works meeting, you had five of the seven people, properties being represented, saying that, hey, we're not trying to stop you. We're, we're just trying to say, reconfigure this. You have three different ways to divide this up. Choose one of the other three. Or Ben had an idea of taking the average of the three, saying, do something, please. So, you made it incumbent upon us to do that, and, you know, no, that didn't happen. Again, we don't want to stop your project. That's not what this is about. But I do very strongly feel that at the Public Works, all of our talking was, fell on deaf ears. I don't, I don't think we were listened to one little bit. You had five of seven parties telling you that, well, let's, let's change the way this is divided. Lee was here saying, hey, I don't have a horse in this race, but I think it's unfair. Ben, who is saying, I have to pay more, but I'm willing to, is saying, let's, let's reconfigure this. I mean, everyone, with the exception of the village and Dan, who wasn't there, and I have since talked, talked to Dan, he says he's not opposed to it, has said that would be just fine to, to reconfigure it to the average or to one of the other deemed okay ways of assessing, and that's, I, I won't ramble on, but that's, that's the consensus here. And I'm sorry we couldn't get you anything. Time ran out.
Excuse me, Colin, while you're up there, I take, I take dramatic exception to what you just said. To have, to sit, to stand up there and tell us that Public Works didn't hear you, that what you said fell on deaf ears, I have a real problem with that, because we turned it back to you guys and we said, if you don't like the way we're doing it, come up with something different. And in fact, there were five other, there were five, I'm, I'm very empathetic. I feel sorry for you, what you went through, but you had five other business people here, very good business people, running very good businesses, who could have picked up the slack and written something for us. But you're coming back to us saying, we don't like what, what you presented, pick one of the other two. I have no doubt that if we were to pick one of the other two, one of the remaining two, half of you wouldn't like that either.
Perhaps.
And to echo what George is saying, it, it didn't fall on deaf ears. We, we put it on you to come up with a plan, so we headed our packets on Friday. So, on Friday, we, so tonight, we could just be going, hey, this is their plan, let's just do it.
I realize that, and I apologize for that, but like I said.
But these guys could have picked up the slack.
Okay.
They could have.
Let, let, let me, let me say then.
You.
Maybe it didn't, maybe it didn't fall on deaf ears, but it felt like it did.
It takes a group.
We have one person speaking.
Amongst ourselves?
No, 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 it doesn't work that way, Nick.
It doesn't work that way.
No.
We had everything going good except for one party in this whole thing. Everybody, everybody agreed. My shop, in, except for one party. One party stopped it. And Nick, Ben, Colin, me, Lee, all agreed on how to do it, but one party never got back. That's been our line all along. And that's been the line all along.
Okay, guys.
Because they're in the term, that doesn't mean we're still standing, saying.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
All right, you guys, we've got Colin up there, you know, we're not gonna let this one run into the, you know, what we had last month's meeting, so.
So, so, so let me, you know, speak to that, you know. As a matter of fact, you know, I, I talked to Dan, and, you know, rightly so, perhaps, he feels thrown under the bus. Well, that's fine, but as he said, we're all watching out for our best interest, and, you know, that makes sense, I get it, you know, none of us is evil here. We're all watching out for our best interest, and, you know, for the smaller businesses that have a lesser amount of impact with this road project, you know, the 71 whatever is a lot of money, and all we're asking is that we can have some time, if you will, to do what you requested, because in the week and a half or two weeks, whatever it was, life got in the way, we did not have time. I would, as I, as I told all you on the Public Works Commission, you know, we're, we're not trying to stop your project, we're not trying to hold it up, but, you know, everyone was saying, hey, let's, everyone was, that was there, said, let's redraw these lines of how it's divided up. And yes, that does mean I pay less and Dan pays more. Sorry, it's how it is. You're absolutely right, Darryl, but that's, that's the reality of it, and, you know, I belabored the point of why, so I won't go into that now. So, if, if we can have some sort of extension, I would really appreciate that. I think it would be a mistake to vote on this how it is. We can and will come up with some sort of agreement, and even if, you know, Dan chooses not to go in on it, you know, you still have five of, of seven parties, and one of those is, is the village itself, and I guess I, no one's talked to them, but they would save money, money on this averaging of three different ways of dividing it up.
I'll be interested to see what you come up with, and here's why. As it currently is now, you have nine years to pay for it. It comes out to be $794 a year, and when you're finished redoing all your math, it may come up to $765 for a whole year. I don't know what the number's gonna be because I don't know what your numbers are gonna be.
Well, it's. We don't know what the bid's gonna be to do it next year, because it's, it's switched back, it's not getting done this year. Am I right in saying that?
Well, if, if we don't act, from what I'm, my understanding from Public Works, if we don't act in this, tonight, this project does not go this year.
Then we're gonna put a.
That's, that's what I'm, you know.
Yeah. I could make one comment on that, and this is just to give you, the board, an option. You have a motion to table on, before you, and to move the project along, you could approve that, or you could amend it and approve it as amended, you know, you could do those things tonight. If you just approve the motion that's on there, not to, not to drag this out or make it a can of worms, but the special assessment process isn't actually complete until we get the final numbers, we redo the math, and then we make a final decision, and so there is gonna have to be, not another public hearing and not another all of that, but there is gonna have to be one more moment when the board reconsider's this and could change their minds based on the actual numbers. So, I just throw it out there that, you know, you, you could possibly approve this tonight as is, and you could change it later if you really want to, before the final numbers are done. So. Let me understand, so we could pass it, they can come up with their plan and put it into next month's packet, am I right in saying that? You guys could reevaluate if you wanted to, if you had new information. Very good. I understand what you're saying. Do you understand what they're saying?
If that's, yeah.
Which the motion on the board?
Sounds great to me, but it's up to you guys, I guess.
Melissa, can you read the existing motion, perhaps?
I don't have it exactly, because I, it's too fast. I have a motion to assess the property owners, including the village, equally as recommended in the engineer's report.
Correct.
I'll second the motion. The motion was already seconded. Actually, Colin, Colin already seconded that, yeah. We have a motion and a second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Should have to accept the engineer's report, because that's really what we're doing.
Page seven.
Yep.
The whole report, not just the.
I don't, I don't object to that. I, I think it's inferred.
I, I think it should accept the engineer's report as part of that motion, so that it's the whole engineer's report, not just the portion of it being divided up.
I think if that's the understanding of the board, that that's inferred in the motion.
Okay, so.
I would take a roll call vote on that.
I will do that.
Just because it's controversial.
Yeah. All right. No further discussion, all in favor of the motion?
I would take a roll call. If, if it would just recommend.
Yeah, so, roll call vote.
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so that means then that if you can come up with a proposal that we might change at another date, that would be acceptable and would be, the board could, would consider that. But right now, we can continue getting the project, you know, lined up, get the numbers that we need. And, you know, like we said, the infrastructure, I mean, the biggest part of this for, you know, benefit is the sewer and the water part of the project. We can certainly leave that road in any, you know, in the condition similar to, yeah, to be very difficult to duplicate it right now. But that's where we are right now, so...
What was the timeframe on that?
Do you want this to go to Public Works first? So just...
I don't think it needs to.
Can I comment on that? There's not a timeframe on that, other than that it's on your guys' shoulders to try to present something to the board, and then...
Right. And that needs to come back to this body.
The board can look at it.
Are you talking about...
First Tuesday.
That's what he's getting at.
Yeah. I mean, I...
Will we have, well, will we have better estimate based on bids by next month?
Yes. Yeah, the bidding process...
That's the key right there.
Tonight, we can move forward, put the project out for bid. So yes, in August, we will have bids.
But the paving part is separate from the other infrastructure aspects of this project. And will they or will they not be bid separately?
It's all included together.
Yeah, it'd be bid the same.
The pavement has a separate schedule item. We can do that.
I think, I'm just going to voice my own opinion on this. I think that because of this controversial issue, the only aspect of this that is controversial is the paving. So that should be called out. Would you agree, board, that this needs to be called out separately so that they have bona fide numbers on which they can do their math?
If you're looking at it as potentially different project, and likelihood is going to be more when you get the bid.
Well, it's not that.
Can we just make it part of the bid?
No, but it is. But on a bid item thing, you're going to know what the asphalt is.
Yeah, what I'm saying is...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. But that's automatic.
We have one at a time.
Could be Schedule B and the total project is E.
Yes, yeah. As long as we know what the asphalt's going to be.
We're getting off track, I think, aren't we?
Yeah. Well, I mean, just one of the same discussion, different players.
They got homework to do, let's keep going on it.
Yeah. Are you talking about just the asphalt or the asphalt replacement?
Are we asking?
Oh, yeah, whatever.
Because if we're asking to come back in August, they're asking for a date that they have to have it here by. If we're not saying August, meaning...
You should be addressing the chair.
Sorry.
I was listening.
Do you understand? He's asking for a date of when they have to have it here. If we're hearing it in August, then we need to back it up.
It'll be September before we're looking at your numbers.
But by the next meeting, if we're going to have something together, we should and can, you know, we should have something.
I think it would behoove you to do it as soon as you can and do as good a job as you can.
And obviously, at this point, if it's approved, the people that are going to pay more have less incentive to go in on it. And so it should be interesting. So either we're going to have something or not, and that's all we're...
I'm hoping that the interesting part is not in this room. But back on your turf.
Oh, I will, Lee.
Okay. Mr. President, the motion that we made and passed, which I thought was going to curtail any further discussion on the project, was that A or B?
That was B.
Do we, are we going to address A?
We do not need two motions now. This presupposed that there was going to be some kind of agreement from them that we were going to vote on.
Thank you very much. That's...
We've dealt with the subject.
That's all I wanted to make sure of. Okay.
Play fair, guys.
If you guys are going to, you guys want to stick around? You're born and welcome.
It gets very interesting.
This is kind of ridiculous.
Okay, item number eight, new business from the board or staff. President's comments. Again, we had, everyone knows with the storm, we have piles of brush throughout the village. We have contracted with the...
Stan, could I ask you to take just a quick break?
Okay. Our recorder die?
The battery's about to, and it doesn't tell you when it, it just doesn't. So I'm going to be proactive and get it done first.
Place is falling apart.
You can't afford lithium batteries.
Wouldn't fit.
Good to go. Okay, item number eight, new business from the board or staff. President's comments are, everyone's aware of the brush issue and trees and stuff that we've had down. We've, everybody, we've had many, many calls to what's going on with that. And we've told people to make sure they had their stuff out to the curb. It would be picked up at the curb if, and I believe they are commencing to start picking up the stuff now. If they go by your house and you haven't got your stuff out to the curb, it will be your responsibility to pick it up because we are not going to make multiple trips. I know some people didn't want it sitting out there, but they have commenced. And I don't know if there's a timeline for finishing or whatever, or where they're at. But I want to make sure everyone is aware that this is going on. And please be patient as it, there was a lot of damage in the two cities, in the village and the city, and not a lot of tree services around doing the work. So we're working on that. The other comment I would make is, we, let's see, I think it's next week is the St. Croix River cleanup, is the group wanted to, we made a resolution last month. So if anybody is so inclined to get down along the river and help, well, of course, right now, the beaches are kind of covered with the high water, so that was going to be tough. It's mostly up in private property. But, you know, please pick up your litters and stuff, especially with the Independence Day holiday on Thursday. Please, I hope everyone has a safe and memorable Independence Day. Gloria.
Thank you. I received a request from Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation to designate whether the village would have an internal staff that would be updating the requests for information submission, or whether they would like the county to do that. Hopefully, I don't need, I was told that we didn't need to have board action, but I did want to make you aware of it, that I have submitted it asking for Bill Rubin from St. Croix County, the executive director for the economic development, to do those submissions. Due to the limited staffing, I think that it's appropriate to have him do that. And basically, what it would do is if a business was asking for a certain criteria and some of our properties fell within that criteria, like say, the shopyards, they would communicate that to the, put them on that list. And that's just not my cup of tea.
Better to have a professional that knows what he's doing. That sounds good to me. Okay, anything else, Gloria?
That's it.
Thank you. Melissa, anything from village clerk?
Nothing.
Nothing at all, thank you. Let's see, next item on the agenda is Plan Commission. Plan Commission did not meet. Next item, Personnel and Finance Committee. We did meet this evening. And we have a, we have some bills to pay, claims and approvals requested. I have a motion from...
Mr. President, I move approval of the nonrecurring claims for June 2013 in the amount of $46,543.91.
Thank you, Daryl. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. George, would you like to start?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Melissa, thank you very much.
Yes, because he asked me if I'd like to start, so I said yes. And then I voted yes. There's a reason.
I didn't think you were double clutching.
Well, Daryl, you just asked.
You can't have two votes. Okay, let's see, next is Police Chief Job Description Approval. We had a discussion. I don't know if we need a motion to recommend the job description, or is that...
Yes. Recommend approval of the...
Okay, well...
Or not recommend approval, but approve, move to approve.
Okay, approval, I mean, I'll make the motion to approve the chief of police duties.
The job description.
Job description as presented from village administrator. Is there a second?
Mark seconded.
Thank you, Mark. See, not a spending.
Discussion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Police Description carries. Public Works is next on the agenda. Chair update, Daryl.
The chair update is that apparently we're going to be proceeding with the shopyards project. So that's good news. Public Works did review several infrastructure items and have some actionable items that come for approval. First of all, we recommend, and I will move, Mr. President, I will move to have Zappa Brothers rebuild the Catch Basin at 504 Fourth Street North and the Catch Basin at 213 Summer Street North at a cost not to exceed $5,855.
Second. Okay, and let the record show it's 501 Fourth. I think Daryl said 504.
My mistake, if I did.
Not a problem. Okay, spending issue. Paul, you want to start us out?
We should have discussion.
Well, discussion? I didn't ask for discussion. Any discussion? Anybody else?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, there also is a storm sewer main that needs repair. And so I move to have Zappa Brothers, Inc. repair the storm sewer main in front of 708 Michelson Street North at a cost not to exceed $4,875.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any further discussion? George, your turn to start.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we also looked at three areas of road maintenance and repair for fiscal 2013. We looked at the issue of crack filling on some identified roads. We looked at hot patching on some identified surface areas, and we considered the subject of seal coating. I'll take those in order, Mr. President, because they are in descending order of funding capacity. So let me start with the issue of crack filling. And the recommendation that was made by Public Works to finance and approved by finance and is recommended here, which prompts my motion, Mr. President, I will move to have Scott Construction, Inc. crack fill the identified 27 streets, and I will not read them, but they'll be attached to the motion.
Thank you.
Listed on the proposal at a cost not to exceed $20,325 and to fund that project by using the crack filling budget of $12,000 and transferring $8,325 from the seal coating line item budget.
Second.
Thank you, George, for the second. Further discussion? Okay, Paul, it's your turn.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yep.
Mark, do you need a blanket?
We're getting close. Get him some coffee. Mr. President, the second item is the hot patching. And we also similarly find ourselves in an under-budget situation as far as hot patching. So the recommendation that was made to Public Works to the Finance Committee tonight, approved by finance and is recommended here and which prompts my motion, Mr. President, I move to have Perfection Paving Company hot patch the 28 identified areas that will be listed on the proposal for the motion at a cost not to exceed $11,456 and to fund that project by using the hot patching budget of $6,000 and transferring $5,456 from the seal coating line item budget.
Thank you, Daryl. Is there a second?
Second.
Paul. Thank you, Paul. Further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. I have heard numerous comments from people who drive through our village, how good our roads are. And I do believe that it is because we take a very, a very strong approach to maintaining our roads so that down the road, we don't have to tear them up and rebuild them. And while some may say we're spending a lot of money on hot patch sealing and so on, it does postpone for a number of years the necessity for repaving.
Thank you, George. Okay. We're done with discussion and the voting?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Okay.
Mr. President, then the third area of maintenance, and I'll use the segue of my learned colleague at the far end of the table to indicate that we are now out of money because we have transferred all the funding, if you were tracking with what I was saying, out of the seal coating budget to do the other two important projects. At the Public Works Committee, we recognize that it is important to maintain the roads. And like the Fram oil filter, you can pay me now or pay me later. And so the recommendation from Public Works to finance was that we do seal coat the three priority roads this year, which would require either some short-term borrowing or the possibility of using some undesignated funds. That was not approved in finance, and so there is no actionable item in front of us. And it means that we will not be doing any seal coating this year, which means that we will get a double whammy next year.
Thank you, Daryl. And that ends that for Public Works. Public Safety, Chair update, Mark?
It's all in the minutes. I'd like to move to authorize and direct two signs affecting westbound traffic along the roadway leading to Brown's Beach, west of Galahad Road North, which reads as follows, no parking between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. And I don't see anybody here who wants to argue about that, I hope.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Let's see, that's not a budget item. All in favor of...
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm just curious, and I'll address it to Mark. With the installation of these signs, that obviously becomes a parking violation in the event that there is a car then parked. What's the fine for violating this no parking sign?
The fine would be $20.
Are you anticipating that this will be an enforcement problem, Gloria?
I don't think it'll be an enforcement problem. We may issue a citation here or there.
And you'll need to patrol more now because it's a no parking area? That's what I meant?
No, I don't think there'll be additional patrols. It'll be on a standard, the standard patrol for the officers. Obviously, specific to the overnight, midnight car, taking care of that. But I actually did have a conversation with the resident that requested the signs just this week again, and there was additional information that was provided on that beach sometimes is used as a shoving off point for some people that meet boulders on the river. They park, they walk down the steps, they get on a boat, they go. And they've noticed over the last several years that then those cars are parked there all weekend while the people are camping on the islands and whatnot. And so an additional item that they're... And so, an additional item that they're trying to curb is that, I guess, based on your comment, that it be a $20 parking spot for them for the, for one night, or $60 for the weekend, however they wanna look at it. I don't know that we'll have that many problems related to that particular stretch of roadway.
Is it possible to include, and these violators will be towed at their own expense?
Not at this time. Our sign ordinance doesn't cover that. I mean, if it were obstruction to the street, we could do that. Our policy is if they're parked there and they receive two citations on the third, they're towed, so if it reaches that level, but not, not on these signs.
The feeling was, let's just start and put a sign up that seemed to keep the resident happy, and we'll take it. We'll amp it up as need be and send down troops, possibly.
Very good. The next question I have is, somebody made the comment that this wasn't a spending, but the signs ain't free, are they?
I will defer to my friend, the Public Works Supervisor, on how much the signs cost.
Basically, it's a sign posting, you know, something you're looking at. I'd say both signs posted last summer, you're right.
What, six, 700 bucks for labor?
And you do have a budgeted item for signs, correct?
Oh, jeez.
You couldn't.
Okay, since we have a budget, it will just, all in favor of posting the signs?
Any other discussion?
Or any other discussion?
God, I hope not.
Me too. Okay, no other discussion. All in favor, sigma by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Done. Public Welfare.
Mr. President, we did meet, and we discussed the Presidential Solid Waste and Recyclable Collection Contract. We will, at a future date, be recommending to the board a request for proposal. After talking to Gloria, I think we're gonna put that off a little bit as it's not due until 2014, December 2014. We discussed the River Valley Deer Management Agreement, and I did call the Baldwin DNR individual responsible for it. He indicated that everything was going well, that Lon was keeping proper records. He indicated that at the current deer kill rate, we would just be maintaining the approximately 70 deer per square mile for North Hudson. He did have one recommendation, which we can discuss at a future date, about potentially putting a ordinance in to the village that would eliminate feeding deer. Apparently, there are some deer enthusiasts that are feeding the deer, that are bringing them into the village, but can be a future discussion. And then, we discuss the public nuisance properties, which we will be going into a closed session to have further comments about.
Thank you, Ted. Park Board, Colleen, Chair update?
We have nothing to bring forward for this meeting. Stan and I did go to the bike coalition meeting last Monday, I was, and there's nothing really to bring forward on that. It's just people wanna try to look ahead to, there's a county bike plan and to try to incorporate the plans, especially with the new bridge and loop trail going through. That's all.
Thank you, Colleen. And now, item 15 is to need to convene into closed session.
You do, and Mr. Chair, you need to read that whole thing, unfortunately.
Okay, I can certainly do that. If I can get the sun out of my eyes for a minute. Okay, convene in closed session. Item A, per section 19.35, now it's the next one over, but that's okay, Brad, I'm good, that'll keep me awake. Section 19.35, parent one, parent F, consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories, disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against a specific person except where par B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations with respect to an appeal of an operator's license denial. Both separate?
Yeah, we should take a roll call vote on that, and then, and then do the next one.
We have two reasons to go in, but we've got people in the audience that are here for one and not the other, so we need to go into closed session, come out, and go back.
Yep, okay. So, George, for item A that I just read, roll call vote?
We also need a-
I'll second it.
Okay.
George is seconded, okay.
Yes.
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 Okay, so, that would be the first-